Good afternoon. The meeting of the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. Roach Hall.
Mr. Bichilli, Mr. Corin, Mr. D'Angelo, Mr. Mazzoni, Mr. Colometto, and Mr. Tucker.
Present.
Gorman is present. First calendar item before the board is application A 1609, the application of Dong Lee, 24 N. Parsons Street, Revere, requesting a rear yard setback variance to enable the appellant to construct a 10-foot-by-14-foot unenclosed exterior deck in the rear yard of an existing structure on lot 192 at 24 N. Parsons Street, Revere.
Could we table that until the applicant arrives? She was told that it would be coming to a vote tonight.
The next application before the board is application A 1611. This is the application of Zach D'Angelo, 295 Remney Road, Revere, requesting expansion of a non-conform accessory structure, variance to enable the appellant to expand the height of an existing garage on an existing footprint of the garage from 11 feet to 15 feet to install a 17-foot garage door in place of the two existing garage doors on lots 264, 265, 266, 267 at 295 Remney Road, Revere.
The applicant, please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Just push the button so that the light comes on. There you go.
Zach D'Angelo, 295 Remney Road.
Okay. If you have anything to add, I mean, the application speaks for itself.
Yep, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any other proponents, anyone in favor. Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing, any members? Okay. We vote at the end of the night, or at the end of the meeting, I should say.
Next application before the is the application A 1612. This is the application of Gary DeBella, 12 Peerview Avenue, Revere, requesting minimum rear yard and minimum side yard setback variances to enable the appellant to construct a single-family dwelling on lots 373, 374, 375, and 376, Goldie Street, Revere.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph Cottodio, 1 Sprague Street, Revere, representing the applicant, Gary Maureen DeBella, who is seeking to construct a single-family home on the lots at the end of Goldie Street off of Washington Ave. Just for clarification, as you can see in the plan, the land is divided between Malden and Revere. The rear yard is actually in Malden. We've already been to the Malden zoning board. I have a copy of their decision, their approval on the rear yard setback. We have no problem with what the site plan review indicated, but we just wanted to clarify that we do have approval by the city of Malden for the construction as proposed. With regard to the application before you, the hardship is pretty self-evident. The lot is a cone-shaped lot, which forces the applicant to utilize the fat part of the area, sliding it over as far as possible so that they can avail themselves of as much off-street parking as possible. The proposal is for a single-family residential dwelling. It is also under the conservation jurisdiction, so we will be before conservation in both Malden and Revere should this application be approved. The land has been owned by the DeBella family for a long, long time, initially by Gary's parents, Larry and Lulu DeBella, who lived on Goldie Street for at least 50 years, for 50 years, they've owned this land for that, close to that amount of time as well. The other unique aspect of the development is that, as shown on the plan, both Waller Street and Marvin Street are paper streets. Waller Street being located in Malden. We've had assurances from Malden Development that they would not approve any further development of Waller Street, so that would remain a paper street, which would give us a great distance in the rear, even though the lot line is close to our structure. The same on Marvin Street. There's no plan for any improvement on Marvin Street, to the point where there's, as shown on the plan, a sewer pump station that's located there and is a permanent structure that would keep Marvin Street from being developed as well. So we have, even though we're seeking side yard, rear yard, and front yard, we have great distances beyond our lot lines that would not impose on anybody at any time. Mr. DeBella looks forward to bringing his family back to Revere, their lifelong residence, both Gary and Maureen. They've raised their family in Revere, and they look forward to remaining as residents in the city. We're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. The one question I had you answered, but I'd like something to be presented to the city clerk, saying that Malden is approved. That was my only question. So if you have that, you submit it to the city clerk of the Board of Appeals. Okay. Seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any...
Mr. Jim in Council Charles Patch called. He could not make the meeting, but he wished to be recorded in favor of this proposal.
Thank you. Seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any other proponents? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? Anyone opposed? Kindly state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name's Mark Maloney. I live at 64 Goldie Street, Revere, Mass. And, you know, when we got the letter in the mail that talked about side yard and rear yard setbacks, but it didn't say anything about the front yard on the notice.
Okay. Is that a question you want answered by the...
Well, on the, on the letter here from the Site Review Board, it is on their front yard setback of 20 feet. That's kind of, do you think I'm opposed to?
Okay. Would the attorney like to answer that?
It actually should be in, the Site Plan Review, I believe, did reference a requirement for a front yard. We do have 15.5 feet at its shortest distance to the, to the front yard. Again, because of the cone shape of the lot, that is a necessity in order to seek out the highest and best use. But again, off of the front yard, there is also a 40-foot street that, and then front yard on the other side, that would give us sufficient distance not to impose on any of that.
I'm looking for the Site Plan Review. Yeah, if you can look at the...
Okay. Is there anything else?
So if you look at the plan, my only question is, you know, proportionally, if you go down Goldie Street, there's about 25 houses that were developed within the last 20 years or so. Most all of them are 20-to-25 feet setbacks. This is going to be the last house on the left, and it's on somewhat of an angle, but the street is straight, so it doesn't run parallel to the street. So my concern is it just, it might, it might look out of place, and there's no front yard setback in the notice I received, but there was one in the letter I got from the City Hall.
No, we're going to check. The Site Plan Review, I believe, did state it in their letter, but...
Front yard setback, yes. Non-compliance with that.
Yeah. Was the application...
Did the application have a front yard variance request? Yes.
Just for your, what's, sir? Just for your knowledge, it is on the plan or anything. Unfortunately, it was not part of the publication of the notice that went in the paper, but it is on their plan requesting that.
Yeah, no, I understand that. That's why I went out of the book, so I went down to City Hall about the paperwork. I thought the front would be 20 feet. I thought it would go from side to rear, but I had no problem with it. It's more the front, a proportional arrangement of the house.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing, any members? Okay.
The next application before the board is application A 1613. This is a further application of application A 1308. Yeah, this is the application of Robert Gibson, 134 Broad Sound Ave., Revere, requesting a minimum set, front yard setback of 20 foot in the Abbey Zone to enable the appellant to construct a roof of an existing front deck at 134 Broad Sound Ave., Revere.
Is the applicant present?
Robert is in Florida. I'm his brother, William, and I'm...
So you're representing him? If you could state your name and address for the record?
Yes. William Gibson, 134 Broad Sound.
Okay. So you reside at the address as well?
Yes.
Okay. The application pretty much speaks for itself. Do you have anything to add, or...
No.
Okay. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I have to ask, are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing, any members? Okay. The application speaks for itself, so we vote at the end of the meeting. Okay? Thank you.
The next application before the board is application A 1614. This is the application of 90 Ocean Avenue LLC, 140 Tremont Street, Everett, requesting a minimum parking variance to enable the appellant to construct a five-story, 60-unit transit-oriented residential development with 76 parking spaces at 90 Ocean Ave., Revere.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Tucker. Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio, 14 Proctor Ave., Revere, Massachusetts. Good afternoon, board members. I'm here today on behalf of the petitioner before you, 90 Ocean Ave. LLC. The owner and principal, the developer, if you will, is Mr. Greg Antonelli. Greg is here. Greg, if you could stand up. Thank you, Greg. Along with Greg is Mr. LaFreniere. He is the architect of this project. His firm is located in Cambridge. He's to the right, and along with him is an associate. They are both here for questioning. I do understand what the protocol here, so I'll try to move it along as it's a ZVA hearing, but they are available here for questions. Briefly, Mr. Antonelli, the developer, he's a well-known local developer out of Everett. He currently constructs homes and properties across eastern Mass. He currently has a portfolio of 260 units under management at this time, so he's not a fly-by-night or a first-time developer. With regard to the petition before you, the current site, 90 Ocean Ave., currently consists of a dilapidated commercial structure that has persisted on the property for over a decade. It consists of about 36,000 square feet, slightly shy of an acre. It's in very poor condition, as the photographs show. It's currently fenced in, preventing people from getting near the building, as the building is pretty much falling in on itself. Apart from the physical blight that is currently located at 90 Ocean Ave., it has also been very problematic over the last 10 years from a crime perspective. There have been at least two murders in the immediate vicinity of this property over the last 10 to 12 years. Again, that is the reasoning for some of the fencing, to prevent people from getting in, from some of the other illicit drug activity that had been taking place there. So again, for purposes of clarity, this, the current site is a very dilapidated site. It is a blight on the community, both in terms of aesthetics, but it has also been a bit of a drain on the police department because of the crime that has frequented that site and the immediate site around it. With regard to the current zoning for that site, as a matter of right, and I tell you this, that there is, as this board knows, as a matter of right, building there. It is currently a residence C2 district. Residential apartments are allowed by right on this property. When you talk about the property in general, as a matter of right, any developer, large-scale developer, can go 14 stories high, as of right. And what I mean again, as of right, no ZVA approval required, no city council vote required. 14 stories high with a floor area ratio of three, which is pretty large. So you could fit in a very large project here. By our calculations, you could fit 135 units with 212 parking spots. You'd build the parking spots underneath and the apartments on top. Again, as a matter of right, without getting consent from the ZVA, without getting consent from the local city council. But again, bigger is not always better. The petitioner in this case, Mr. Antonelli, when we first developed this project, we came to the city months ago with the thought of getting insight from the administration on what would fit best there. Rather than going 14 stories, Mr. Antonelli decided to put a project in there that was consistent with the other apartment houses that are in the area. So instead of going 14 stories, we went five stories. Instead of pushing for 135 units, the current proposal before you is for only 60 units, okay? And when we talk about those 60 units, it's important to recognize these are high-end units. They're going to have high-end appliances, they're going to have Wi-Fi, they're going to have Zipcar availability, and they're all being geared for usage toward the Revere Beach train station. The Revere Beach train station is 500 yards away, or a five-minute walk. That is the preferred commuting instrument that we're hoping our tenants will have. Look, there's no secret. Boston is going through a building boom right now, and rents in Boston are climbing. They're in the $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 range, depending on what the units are. We're clearly hoping to capitalize on that increase. We're hoping to get quite a few white-collar individuals who work downtown and are willing to take that train. They're willing to enjoy the beautiful view on Revere Beach. They're willing to enjoy the beautiful amenities that this building will offer, and they're willing to take the blue line into Boston and work downtown. That is the, what we expect to be a large percentage of the tenants in this property. Of the 60 units, consistent with that theme, 41 units are one bedrooms. Again, 41 units are one bedroom. The 19 units that are two bedrooms are two bedrooms because they are corner units. To optimize the windows on the corners, they are the only two-bedroom units, and there are 19 of those. So 41 out of 60 are one-bedroom, 19 are two-bedroom. There are zero, zero three-bedrooms in this proposed building. So again, it's a much smaller project than what can be built there as a matter of right. But I think what's clear is that when you only go five stories instead of the 14, you have to place the parking outside of the, outside of the building. It cannot go under the building any longer. And so in working out the footprint, the 36,000 square feet of footprint, we were able to locate 75 parking spaces, okay? That's 75 parking spaces. The ratio is 1.25 for each unit. So each unit will have, on average, 1.25 parking spaces, okay? We are short 20 spots. That is the petition before you. We have the height, we don't need relief. We don't need relief on the sides. We don't really need relief on the back. We don't need relief in the front. The only minimal relief we're asking for is the parking, and that's 20 spots. Again, I think it's very harmonious with what's already there in that area. I think if anyone is facing this project, and they look up to the right, and they get to the WTA district, the Wonderland Transit-Oriented Development, that overlay district already has reduced parking, and the ratio there is 1.25 per single units. So for the single units, our request is already consistent with what's being offered a little bit further down on the beach. We're off a little bit on the two families. We're off by about four spots, I believe, four and a half spots. But again, this proposal is totally consistent, given the fact that you have the Revere train station 500 yards away. People are going to be taking their cars to work, and there's going to be Zipcar access. That's the tenancy, that's the clientele that this building will be serving. We hope that this board acknowledges that. We respectfully submit that this is a great proposal, and that it's not overtaxing the schools in the city, because it's not going to attract families with kids. It's not overburdening the roads in the city, because people are taking the train inside and out of Boston. And again, it's a high-end apartment house. The goal is to attract, you know, a fairly well-to-do tenancy. Indeed, you know, the city of Revere is benefiting from the uptick in development across eastern Massachusetts, and that's a very good sign. And I think what's even better for the city of Revere, that you attract developers like Mr. Antonelli, who don't just try to come in and overbuild. In this particular case, I'd suggest to you, we're underbuilding, because it meets the community standards, it's what's there, and I hope the board agrees with that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Just for the edification of the public and the audience here, this is not a city council meeting. We are strictly here to vote on a variance. This is the Board of Appeals, so I will not tolerate any dissertations on why they're doing apartments or whatever. That has nothing to do with the Board of Appeals. With that said, are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? If you'd kindly step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dimitri Dofilakis, and I live at 10 Ocean Ave. I'm a condominium owner. I've been a resident of Revere for three and a half years. I will not, I was prepared to say many things, but you just shot that.
Yeah, this is not the city council meeting.
I respect that, and I'll do that.
Thank you for respecting that.
All right. I want to say, first of all, I'm glad that they're right, that it's a mess next door. That old Chinese restaurant has been an eyesore for years. It's good that it's being cleaned up. One issue about this variance that I, it's a question that I ask, is where is the retail space? And is allowing the variance on how many parking spaces they're going to have, have any effect on retail? We have 650 rental apartments at the other, newly being constructed at the end of Ocean Ave. There is no retail space on Ocean Ave. And it would be important to look at this request for variance in space and parking, does it have an effect? And is it possible for them put in some retail space for the community at large that lives there, rather than grant this variance in parking?
So the questions that you're asking will be answered by the developer or the attorney at the end of the opposition. So once I take, have everyone being allowed to speak, they can then get up and answer your questions, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other opponents? Kindly state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ron Shampo. I live on Stevens Street in Revere. Again, I concur with the previous speaker. I am against granting the extra 20 spaces. One of the things, I think, to wait to find out about the retail component, the commercial component, I think is going to be problematic in this respect. According to the newspaper, the Journal, it spoke about a coffee shop, which is wonderful, which is something that sorely needed in that area. But the issue is, if there is a coffee shop there, or whatever the retail issue is, does that not then present a hindrance? No. In this way, it'll increase more parking out in front of that building. I'm for it, but I think we have to use wisdom here. Grant 20 spaces, relief for 20 spaces, and then with an addition of a coffee shop or some other retail component, that's only going to increase the amount of parking that's going to be, have to be in front. It's sorely needed. We need improvement down the beach, and we need an improvement at that site. But I think we cannot accept this proposal as it is written.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other opponents? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing, if the attorney would like to address the question?
I do. Thank you. I want to thank both gentlemen for coming tonight. You actually asked some really good questions, and there were questions that we grappled with early in this process in April. The intention wasn't to just come here with a plan, a predestined plan, and try to get a vote on it. We've actually been at this since April, trying to get input. And so I want you folks to really understand that this plan, to some extent, to a large extent, was a collaborative effort between different people in the city on coming up with something that'll work for the neighborhood. With particular, the question about commercial retail space on the first floor. It's a great question. My client was more than willing to do that. There was no issue. In fact, our first set of plans that went back to the architect had that intent in mind, to turn a good chunk of the underneath parking to retail space. Unfortunately, we've had to encounter something that's fairly new in the city. They've changed the flood zone maps, the federal flood zone maps, and that's a relatively new development over the course of the last 12 months. So it didn't apply to any development that was erected prior to that. But under the new guidelines, you cannot have streetwalk residential or streetwalk mixed use anymore, because the foundations need to come up out of the ground, depending on grade, up to eight feet. So you cannot have windows on the first floor, literally. It creates a design nightmare. The only way that you could do it is to have, literally, concrete barriers coming up eight feet, and then have a steel curtain around it that you would somehow close the doors off in order to prevent the surge if we had a汹涌 surge. Now, in all my time over there, 40 years, I'm not quite sure I've ever seen a surge that would honestly necessitate this. But unfortunately, this is the federal government that's done it. And in fact, I have some pictures of what that rating would be, if you folks would like to see it. The captain showed you. But to alleviate the concern, it was our intention. We had every hope in the world of doing that on the first floor, but when it became clear that it couldn't be done, and it became clear to City Hall that it couldn't be done, then the question was, well, can we do something a little bit more creative than do that first floor and an architectural and engineering system? And we did. We honestly looked at the Summerfield Square Mall, Assembly Square Mall, if that's what it's called. And if folks go to Assembly Square Mall, they find that they have some storefronts that are box-like, and they are seasonal, depending on how much snow they get, and they literally open and close, and they allow for coffee shops and food establishments. And I kind of breeze over it in my presentation, but if I could show the board, the entire right side of the facade of the building on the first floor does have these commercial boxes. So there is going to be a commercial element to that first floor, as best we could design it. And as best we could design it, it was to get creative and basically steal a suggestion that they're currently using as Assembly Square Row in Summerfield and to bring that in. So this project does envision retail space on that first floor, and it's been designed with the intent of having tables, tables and chairs and walkways so that we activate the sidewalk. The goal is not to bring cars to this facility. It's never to bring cars. That coffee shop and that food establishment next door, that's going to cater to people who are walking up and down the beach. And the reason for that is that we want to activate the sidewalk along all the developments, not just this one. We want a consistent facade, a consistent commercial presence on the first floor, leading all the way up to Revere Street and potentially all the way, as you take the bend into Beach Market, Beach Market Station. So that is the goal, is not to bring other vehicles into that spot. That, those coffee containers will be servicing the people in the building, as well as the people in the buildings next door. There is no parking for those coffee shops, for that sub shop, for that food shop. It is just the opposite. It is there, it's catered to the people that we want to activate the sidewalks with. One of the biggest problems on this side of the beach is that the blight has really made the sidewalks unwalkable. And you don't get any passersby that walk by this property. I mean, it's, the fence is rusty. If you rub against the fence, you may get an infection. It's incredible. You've had two murders there in the last 10 to 12 years.
City Council, it's not.
I don't mean to go overboard. But so it was. I appreciate the questions, and it was contemplated. Thank you.
What's the square footage of retail?
Sorry. I got a wrong shape. But what is the square footage, estimated...
Again, Ron Shampo, what is the square footage estimated to be for retail or for commercial? How much square footage? Does it, does it contain the entire first floor?
These are temporary units that would be placed. Seasonal units that would be placed. So they're not part of the structure itself.
Antonelli uses.
That was my concern. They're not part of the building structure.
Okay, so I'm confused. Forgive me, forgive my ignorance, but I don't understand what you're saying. Is, is it an open area? Is it? Like a container? Yeah. Right, so it's more like, it actually doesn't look like a part of the building. In essence, it isn't.
Correct.
It's outside the building on the sidewalk area.
Okay, just 'cause this isn't a city council meeting, I'm not gonna keep, allow this to continue. Basically, if this district was put down from the Wonderland Overlay District, they'd be requesting a variance for four spaces, for four parking spaces. That's the way that it's, that I'm looking at this development. I don't do the zoning for the city, but if the zoning was pushed down the way it should've been, and I believe your building, when it was built and constructed, there was a lot of variances for parking involved in that building. Think there's something to go over to the other side of the street, and it, so there's a lot of issues that were pretty much similar to what's being presented here tonight. So with that being said, is there any members that wish to speak on this? Nope. Anyone in, it's all people in the audience have spoken? Okay, before we take this up, we have the applicant for our first calendar item number in the audience. So would you, Lee Dong, could you please step up to the microphone just to make this official and state your name and address for the record? And thank you for coming again. So just state your name and address for the record, just so we have this on file.
Uh, my name is Moi Nguyen. I'm in 24 Napansett Street in Revere.
Okay, and this is a continuation from the public hearing that was taking place back in June. So I will ask if there's any proponents. Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. The question that we had was answered by Site Plan Review, so we will be voting on this. So if you have a seat, we'll take it up as a calendar item number. That's all you had to do to be here. I apologize, but you had to come and just state your name and address. So if you have a seat, we'll be voting on it right now, okay?
I sit right here?
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First application before the board is application A-1609, the application of Dong Lee, 24 Napansett Street, Revere, requesting a rear yard setback variance to enable the appellant to construct a 10-foot by 14-foot unenclosed exterior deck in the rear yard of an existing structure on Lot 192 at 24 Napansett Street, Revere. Question comes on granting the relief requested. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Dong Lee, first one? Yes. Mr. Mizony? Yes. And Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. Second application?
Okay, I just, so that you don't run. It's granted, you'll get a letter from the city clerk, so you're all set. Wait for the letter, okay? Thank you. You're welcome. Next calendar item number?
The next application before the board is application A-1611, the application of Zach D'Angelo, 295 Romney Road, Revere, Mass, requesting expansion of a non-conforming accessory structure to enable the appellant to expand the height of an existing garage on existing footprint of the garage from 11 feet to 15 feet, and to install a 17-foot garage door in place of two existing garage doors on lots 264, 265, 266, and 267 at 295 Romney Road, Revere. Due to the provisions of the ethics rules, Mr. D'Angelo will not participate in this proceeding. He will be recorded as absent. Question comes on granting the relief requested. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Mizony? Yes. And Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. And Mr. Colometto? Yes. It is granted. The next application before the board is the application of Gary DeBella, 12 Pierview Ave., Revere, requesting minimum front yard, rear yard, and minimum side yard setback variances to enable the appellant to construct a single-family dwelling on lots 373, 374, 375, and 376, Goldie Street, Revere. Question now comes in granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Mizony? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. The next application before the board is application A-1613, the application of Robert Gibson, 134 Broad Sound Ave., Revere, requesting minimum front yard setback of 20 feet within the Abbey District variance to enable the appellant to construct a roof over an existing front deck at 134 Broad Sound Ave., Revere. Question comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Mizony? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. Next application before the board is application A-1614. This is the application of 90 Ocean Ave., LLC, 140 Tremont Street, Everett, requesting minimum parking variances to enable the appellant to construct a five-story, 60-unit transit-oriented residential development with 76 parking spaces at 90 Ocean Ave., Revere. The appellants have presented to the board memorandum supportive variance and a proposed decision for the board. Question comes on granting the relief requested. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Mizony? Yes. And Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. Also, the, that's it. Next?
The next meeting will be September 28th at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.